Keeps us entertained.
We got that recorded, Jim.
It's gonna cost me to get it off the.
We are all set.
Okay, welcome everyone. It's six thirty-seven on Monday, November fifth. This is the regular meeting of the Arlington City Council. I'm Mayor Rich Nagel. I'll be presiding at the meeting. I'll call the meeting to order and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We will have a roll call. Councilmember Highland.
Yeah, it's a member of Congress.
Here.
Councilmember Batchory.
Here.
Councilmember Yashewski.
There.
Councilmember Havens.
There.
All councilmembers are present. Also at the table is City Administrator Pat Melvin to my left. City Attorney Ross Arneson is unable to be here this evening. He usually would sit on that right. Those with us in the audience, Jason Temrite, representing Bolden and Bank, Police Chief John Pedersen, Mike Stumm, Ben Nielsen, representing the Ridgeview Civil Medical Center, John Zaski, and then representing the Enterprise, Kurt Mink. Welcome again, everyone. With that taken care of, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Yashewski, second by Councilmember Highland, to approve the agenda as presented. I'm sorry, we do have a few additions doing that.
Yes.
So we'll call for that motion again. We do have one addition under announcements, and it's an announcement regarding an appearance coming up at the public library. And City Administrator Melvin will read that one.
Thank you, Adam. I just brought this up. Ryan Jacobson will be speaking at the community center here on November fourteenth from twelve to one. And he has written, I believe it's a children's book, on Adam Thielen, the football star who unfortunately did get a hundred yards, but had quite an accomplishment even without that.
Okay, great. And then another one will be that there is a special workshop meeting scheduled tentatively for Thursday, November eighth. Asking councilmembers if they can make that, six o'clock, it'd be for budget purposes.
What time? Six o'clock.
I cannot.
We can have further discussion when we get around to that.
Further discussion under the discussion area. Just sort of keep in mind that. Okay, with the addition then, is the motion is by Councilmember Yashewski, is still valid?
Yeah.
For the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. And second by Councilmember Highland. On favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Or is no? Motion carried. Agenda's been approved. Moving into the consent agenda. The consent agenda tonight consists of four items. Item A, approval of the October first regular meeting minutes. Item B, approval of the October fifteenth regular meeting minutes. Item C, approval of bills. And item D, approval of Scott Equipment Company, application for fireworks, pyrotechnics, special effects on Saturday, December first, 2018, as part of the 2018 Arla-Dazzle event.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Cowell, second by Councilmember Highland, to approve the items of the consent agenda. Favor say aye?
Aye.
Or is no? Motion is carried. There are no public hearings this evening. Is there anyone wishing to address the council at this time? Hearing none, we'll move on to the announcements.
First announcement is that the city offices will be closed on Monday, November twelfth, in observance of the Veterans Day holiday. Thank you to those veterans who gave their time and, in some cases, lives for our country. Second announcement is that the city offices will be closed on Thursday, November twenty-second, and Friday, November twenty-third, for the Thanksgiving holiday. The Arla-Dazzle event, which is scheduled for Saturday, December first, has raffle tickets that are available here at City Hall. Over thirty prizes with retail value exceeding five thousand, five hundred dollars. So encourage residents to get out there and to buy their Arla-Dazzle raffle tickets. Fourth item, truth and taxation budget hearing will be held here on December third at six o'clock. Residents are invited to come and learn more about the various factors that are playing into the city's 2019 budget. And then the last item, the announcement, again, that Ryan Jacobson, an author, will be meeting in the community center from twelve to one on November fourteenth to talk about the children's book that he has written about the Minnesota Viking, Adam Thielen.
Okay, that's it for the announcements. Is there any questions regarding any of those items? Hearing none, move on to communications.
I wanted to share with the council.
Sorry, was there F underneath there too regarding that workshop date or not? Or was that put somewhere else?
I think we put that under.
It was under open discussion.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
So going back, we received a letter dated October twelfth from the Employment and Economic Development, pleased to announce that we have received funding through the Minnesota Business Development Public Infrastructure Grant Program of ninety-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. That will assist the city in extending utilities to the proposed Incasi site, which is located on the southwest side of Arlington here. So that's a wonderful contribution that will help us to bring that business to town and provide them with what they need to operate successfully.
Is that a matching fund? Is that... Or what is that?
The city will be putting approximately a hundred and twelve thousand into it. It's a matching fund, but I believe that we are able to use some of Jason's engineering time. Am I correct in saying that, Jason? That we'll be able to use kind of in-kind services.
In-kind services, yes.
Some of Jason's time as a... for engineering and working on that, so.
Great.
Moving on to reports, we do have a guest this evening from the Ridgeview Civil Medical Center, Mr. Ben Nielsen. He was the interim administrator, and he would like to give us an update. Welcome, and up to the table, use the microphone there.
Sure.
We need to touch that button in the center.
Screen already.
Screen already.
Move it close so we can.
Well, thanks for having me. I'm Ben Nielsen with Ridgeview. Been with Ridgeview for about nine years, with Todd Sandberg moving up to Aiken. I've had the pleasure of coming down here for the last few months while we searched for his replacement. So I won't be the longstanding administrator down here, but will continue to work with Arlington community and the board for Ridgeview. So, few updates. A lot of our time and energy has been on the construction project on the campus. It's always fun when you have an older facility and also an operation that runs twenty-four seven, trying to figure out how to accomplish the remodel and expansion. But starting to get to the phase where we're starting to open up some of the departments in brand-new spaces or at least remodeled spaces. So the lab has been finished down in the basement. The next few months in the lower level will have pharmacy and also our outpatient infusion and chemotherapy space open and available for patients. And then early next year will probably be the biggest change where the new emergency department and the ambulance entrance will open. We'll have four private emergency rooms. People have been there. We have the three rooms that are somewhat shared by curtains. So the four dedicated private rooms is going to be a huge improvement for patient care and the patients we take care of. And one of them will be a trauma, so we'll even be able to take care of more the trauma patients more appropriately in that space. So excited to get that open. Once we move into that, it'll vacate kind of where we're taking care of patients now. You'll be able to finish remodeling that space, have a dedicated urgent care space for urgent care services, and then updating for nurses' desk, HUC workstations, so forth. And I've learned through the process that you never give a date, so I'll give in seasons. That hopefully in summer of next year, we'll have that thing completely finished. So excited about that. Few more quick updates from a provider standpoint, physicians and nurse practitioners. We've been fortunate to retain our providers over the last few years and recruit in some new ones. This past March, we added Gina Alden, nurse practitioner, and Carol Eggersluse. And then about a year from now, a little bit less than that, we'll have Dr. Teresa Meyer joining, who grew up in Arlington. And then Dr. Nick Dieter, who will also be joining in fall of next year. And they'll somewhat split their accountability in Arlington and Listur, where we have another hospital. It'll be bringing in... It'll be good to add a new physician next year. Services, as far as new services. You know, probably the two that would highlight, the hospitalist program. What is meant by a hospitalist program is it's dedicated physicians taking care of patients in the hospital. Up in Wilconia, I've worked with the hospitalist group for the last nine years. We probably are up to a group of about fifteen providers. So one of their shifts is to start in Arlington every day, seven days a week. Benefit is, all they do is hospital care. From a continuity of care standpoint, if you're in the hospital for three or four days, it's the same position typically, if it's at least within that Monday to Sunday window. And we've had some patients where we've transferred from Arlington to Wilconia that comfort of saying, you know, I'll be that same doctor when you get up there this afternoon to take care of you. And even the vice versa, where we've been busy enough in Wilconia where we don't have beds anymore, we've transferred some patients from our emergency department in Wilconia down to Arlington. And that same message is like, same doctors that are upstairs taking patient... Taking care of patients will take care of you in Arlington. You know, if you kind of go back ten years ago when we had physicians here, our family practice docs saw patients in clinic, took care of the emergency department, and also saw the patients and the in-patients. Healthcare's changed so much, everything is so specialized. So now we have clinic docs, we have a separate group taking care of our patients in the emergency department, and now we also have hospitalist patients. And then another service, gastroenterology, Dr. Sabina Khan has been coming down to Arlington on Tuesdays to provide more dedicated GI services, both in clinic and procedural, doing endoscopies, colonoscopies. So a nice service to add to the community. And really, my last update is more of a Ridgeview system update. This past month, the board approved moving forward with Epic. So if you're familiar at all with healthcare, Epic is somewhat of the monopoly from an electronic medical record standpoint, at least within the Twin Cities. The line of Fairview Health Partners, all of the systems are on Epic. Where Ridgeview has been, you know, a joke in saying we're on everything but Epic, and it's not typically a good thing. You like to be on one consolidated electronic medical record. So almost like in a construction project, it's, you know, we've got the support from our board, but it'll be almost two years by the time we actually go live with Epic across the whole system. But it'll definitely be good for us all to be on the same electronic medical record.
Could you say something about what Amy Edwards? Her name, Winke Meyer, nurse that goes around and talks to patients about what's going on?
Within the clinic or the hospital?
Well, she... At the meeting, it was described, she went to different hospitals and talked to patients about, you know, their anxiety they maybe have for being in the hospital.
Okay. I don't know if it had been a social worker. I'm not sure, Ben, on what you had.
I just... I don't know what to say. She was an old student of mine, so.
Okay.
I knew her by that name and Reagan.
Yeah.
And I talked about how excited she's of an addition she's going to be to the program, working with the patients and kind of taking them by the hand.
Sure. It might be similar to navigation, that we're doing care coordination.
That sounds.
Yeah. You know, trying to get away from, at least for the more acute or sicker patients, trying to get away from the idea of, at least on the clinic side, you know, you're scheduled for twenty minutes with your provider, and then our relationship's done, and we wait for you to come back in the next time, and we'll take care of you for twenty minutes again. Really taking the approach of having nurse navigators, you know, calling that patient, or how's your diabetes going, checking up on them. Be more proactive with, you know, the idea of them being healthier, keeping them out of the emergency department. You know, they help with people that are trying to quit smoking. And the same thing, if they are going through inpatient or if they're going, you know, oncology or other specialists, they can kind of help hold their hand in, you know, frankly, the complex healthcare system that we live in.
That's just what I was thinking of, that program.
Good.
Any other questions for Ben? That, Ben.
Now, isn't telemedicine, isn't that kind of the trend of the future, the wave of the future? I'm just curious if you...
Yeah, it is, and we've been wrestling with how and where and when to get into it. You know, like any other IT department, you know, the list is long and resources are thin, and Epic is not going to help us as we try to figure out how to get telemedicine. You know, we've used telemedicine as we try to figure out, how do we connect Arlington to Wilconia? And, you know, Listur is part of our system now too. And, you know, do we need to send a hospitalist down here, you know, to use that example? Or can we use telemedicine to help support that? It depends on who you talk to. I know a lot of physicians still is like, you know, I just need to pick up the phone and talk to their doc and talk about what's going on with this patient. But certainly the trend is there. There are a lot of psychiatric type of opportunities for a telehealth. You know, that's one service line that is difficult from an access standpoint. So we're looking at different options there. So it's certainly on our list, yeah.
Do you feel that you have the internet connection, the fiber that you need to be successful in that? Or is there something that the city?
Yeah, I don't know if we're getting to that point to understand if that's a barrier or not. My guess is it's not. You know, we're pushing big CT images all over the place and MRIs and, you know, the live video feed. We can all do it on our phone pretty quickly. So I don't think that's going to be the barrier. It's, you know, the compliance, it's the cost of getting into it. It's, you know, if you do it, how are you documenting, and then what do you get paid for it? Is it different than seeing a patient face-to-face? But a lot of systems are, you know, quite a bit farther ahead of us, so they, you know, they've done it already, so we can figure it out and learn from them.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you for the good work, Ben.
Okay, I think at this time, with the permission of the council, I would call John Zaski up, who wants to visit with us about the fire truck. Move him forward on the agenda.
Thanks for having me on kind of a short notice.
You're gonna be a regular, John.
Not that I like it.
One of these days, he's gonna come to us with money.
I asked him to bring a bag in.
Actually, last time I seen you, I did bring five thousand.
I think more went out.
Well, you had something to do with that. So I got two estimates. We had our trucks recertified, and our generator wasn't working on engine two. So Emergency Apparatus gave me a quote on fixing it. And I about fell over when I seen the number, and then I talked to Pat. So I called Pete from Mavericks, he used to work on generators. And he called Paul from Peeps. And the two of them put an estimate together of what it would cost to fix with some additional recommendations. They actually had part of the truck apart tonight before I had this estimate, so they could look at, give me a closer idea of what it was going to cost to fix it. So there's quite a bit of difference between Emergency Apparatus and what the two local guys will do it for. It's about half the price.
Then you're confident that they can do just as good a job as this other?
Well, that's... Pete used to work on generators for Cummins. And they actually said they would go so far, and they would determine if the generator was... Emergency Apparatus never had our generator out. They pulled the PTO shaft, seen the spleen was... And then they came up with this price. Well, they pulled the shaft tonight too, to make sure that actually the spleens were gone, and they are. But the cover and stuff where the generator is, was never taken off of. So that's the unknown, so that's why they have other stuff in here that they recommend going to do. But I feel really confident. Pete's worked on generators for quite a few years. And Paul does all our service work on our big trucks. So it's actually pretty good to see two business in town team together to work on one of our fire trucks.
Yep.
So what I'm looking for is permission to give them the go-ahead to fix the truck. Because right now, we have no generator on it, so none of our electrical on the truck works.
So, John, is the total price, the forty-four seventy-five plus the thirty-eight fifty plus the four fifty-eight?
Yeah, the total, with the recommended and required, is eighty-seven eighty-three with Pete and Paul's. And they said when you're pulling the fluids and all that apart, when you got it that far, you might as well change all the fluids and change the filters and stuff.
And at that price, that gets everything done that needed done. We're not cutting any corners.
No.
Is there a chance of it going a little bit higher than that, or?
There's always, there's always beyond no one.
Right.
You know, with... Right now, we can't spin the generator over because the spleens are gone on the shaft. I don't believe there's anything wrong with the generator, but there's no way to tell unless you pull it out and hook it up.
Right.
And Pete said typically, what goes is there's a bearing in the generator, and he had figured in some stuff for that too. So he was pretty confident on the generator part.
I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the Maverick and Intown businesses to try and fix that generator. Eighty-seven eighty-three is the total.
Motion by Councilmember Batchory, second by Councilmember Yashewski, to approve the expenditure for engine number two, that is to get the generator repaired at a cost of eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three by... What is it? It's Maverick and Peeps, is that?
Paul Peeps, yeah.
Paul Peeps, all right. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Or is no? Motion carried. Second was Yashewski.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Mike, you want to come up and make your presentation?
Thanks for having me. Kind of left me by myself tonight, so careful.
Can ask for anything, right?
Yeah. For most of you, these requests are the same as last year. Did Leah supply information to you guys electronically? You have a copy?
In the packet, we have the 2017 request, which she said is the same.
There's no, absolutely no changes, so should I just read them down the line and discuss them one by one?
Would that be great.
Just the requests that we have been doing for practically the last ten years for Arlington. The parade route permit, starting with parade staging on the west end of Main. Parade starting at Highway five going east on Main to the city shed. And I think we've always noted in there, if possible, if Kirby or the guys could check for any low-hanging limbs on that east onto Main. Some of those, if there's anything real low, some of those faults might get hit. Otherwise, no changes on that parade route. Second item would be to close Main at noon for the pre-parade activities. Closing streets from Main to the alley on Fourth Avenue southwest, Third Avenue southwest and northwest, First Avenue north and First Avenue south. And those are streets that we do have food concessions on. Placement of, to allow us for placement of the portable fire pits on Main Street. Use of Main Street parking lot for AFD's Fish Camp and the also the Lido Theater Lot. We've, I don't think we've ever really had to do this, but if icy, can Main Street be sanded prior to? So it wouldn't be slippery. But usually that's done regardless, so I'm not too worried about that. The request of available use, or orange cones for us to use for the five K. And the request of road barricades placed on the corners Friday, so we can move them on Saturday. And request for trash cans. Now, those two together typically have always helped Kirby just grab them out of the shed down there and help place them and stuff like that. And the request of, I think in your notes you'll see, if you've got them, it'll say twelve porta-potties. We'd like to increase that to fourteen. Now, in the past, I believe, is Kirby calling on that? And is it better? Do you want us to? I mean, we pay for these, correct?
I think so.
I'm sure we, I think we.
I believe so.
Um, in the past, I think Kirby has taken care of calling that in. If you need any change there, I certainly could take care of it with the information. And then I'll also assist the gentleman and put them in spots that they need to be. Waive the prohibition of public consumption on the parade route for the time of the parade. Police assistance increased based on their recommendations. Chief Peterson's been at all of our meetings, and he is fully informed on all of this, knows more about it than I do, so I don't know if you have any comments on that, John?
I think we got it covered.
And then at the end, and I think we could take this off, use of city personnel. And I think Leah wrote that on there, if you're reading the same thing I am. So I'm not sure if this meant maybe for setting up barricades, cones, shutting off streetlights. All we really need there is, and I usually am in contact with Kirby to shut the streetlights off when the train shows up, and I think so. So that's what we have, and that's the same since it's been in the past. We appreciate your consideration, if I understand.
I'll make a motion to approve our Arla-Dazzle request of city approval and resources.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Cowell, second by Councilmember Batchory, to approve the requests of the, from the Arla-Dazzle Committee, committee for the various things. Working the city staff and such, and police department, on December first. Is there any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Or is no? Motion is carried.
That was easy.
That was good.
Nice.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Helped out, see all that.
That's right.
All right, we'll move on to ordinances. We do have ordinance three twenty-four, and this is the second reading of ordinance three twenty-four, Keeping of Animals Within the City Limits Above Arlington.
Councilmembers, this is the last and final reading. Council members, this is a uh the last and final reading uh regarding allowing chickens or ducks to be uh. To be had within the city of Arlington. As you may recall, we had discussions over the summer. Uh we had Police Chief Pedersen here who uh informed us that uh there were some chickens and ducks out there. And uh thought that they were not posing any problem and so the city council went and took a look. At uh what some other communities had in terms of a policy to allow chickens or ducks to be maintained within the city. Uh the nice policy was put together uh which allows people to have uh chickens or ducks. As well as a uh form permitting form so that the city would be aware of of which residents are maintaining that. Find out that uh if they are not complying with uh what is required to maintain chickens and ducks. That we can at that time have the police department take a look and uh ensure that everybody is getting along. That chickens and ducks are being respectful of other individuals' uh property rights, so. With that said, I would open it up to any discussion, John. Anybody?
Is this the application that will be used then? Is this the final application as far as you know?
Correct.
Okay, I do see, not that it makes any difference, cause I had never, I'd never heard a Drake car uh crow at dawn.
Yeah, there's a nice.
But uh everywhere else it says no roosters or drakes, but on the application it just says rooster's not permitted.
Okay.
So I think we should add or drakes, no roosters, roosters or drakes not permitted. I can understand the roosters, can understand why they eliminate drakes, but.
Better than alarm clock.
Roosters.
Rooster, yeah.
Like I said, I've never heard a Drake crow at dawn yet, so. Okay, we have in front of you then um ordinance three twenty-four, second reading. If there are no further questions, we will take care of approving it uh down the line, I believe.
We need a motion to move that, can we take it?
Underneath resolutions, we do have the uh the resolution, I believe, that's uh yes. So we'll move on and down to uh resolutions. Item A, approve or deny resolution sixty-nine dash twenty eighteen. Which is uh an ordinance dealing with the uh the chicken issue that we just discussed.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution sixty-nine twenty eighteen, approving an ordinance amending chapter eleven of the city code. Relating to animals and authorizing summary publication thereof.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, councilman Yashewski introduced resolution sixty-nine dash twenty eighteen. It is approving the ordinance amending chapter eleven of the city code relating to animals. And the summary publication thereof. It was uh seconded by council member Cowell. Is there further discussion? Hearing that, a vote by roll call. Council member Batch.
Yep.
Council member Haddelstein.
Yes.
Council member Yashewski.
Yes.
Council member Cowell.
Yes.
Council member Hyland.
Yes.
All in favor and opposed, your resolution is adopted.
Oh boy, get my chickens.
Yeah. He'll buy me some tomorrow. Six roosters. It's to wake John up in the morning.
Okay, we also have uh have uh item B then, uh approve or deny resolution seventy dash twenty eighteen, accepting the donation and designating its use.
Council members, we were very fortunate in that uh Doling Farms has donated a hundred and fifty dollars to the Arlington ambulance. Uh this resolution uh accepts that donation and uh it will be used uh towards some expense associated with the ambulance division.
I'll introduce uh resolution seventy twenty eighteen, uh resolution accepting a donation and designating its use.
Second.
Council member Batcher introduced resolution seventy dash twenty eighteen. I don't remember the registry, I've got sixty-nine dash twenty eighteen in mind, just wanna make sure what that last one is.
Uh sixty-nine was the chickens, yeah.
Was the chickens. Okay. Okay, uh council member Batcher introduced resolution seventy dash twenty eighteen, a resolution approving, whoops. I kept the wrong one, that's why. Resolution uh accepting donation and designating its use. And that is a resolution from Doling Farms in the amount of a hundred and fifty dollars to be used towards the ambulance department. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, vote by roll call. Council member Haddelstein.
Yes.
Council member Yashewski.
Yes.
Council member Cowell.
Yes.
Council member Hyland.
Yes.
Council member Batcher.
Yes.
All in favor and opposed, your resolution is adopted. Moving on to unfinished business, uh approve or deny contractor's estimate number one, the amount of a hundred and thirty-four thousand four hundred ninety-five dollars and eight cents. For the twenty eighteen street improvement project, Second Avenue Northwest and alleys. Mister February, would you, do you have anything to add to what was submitted for?
No, I I accepted the contractor's quantities, confirmed those with Kirby and uh prepared the estimate based on all that information.
Okay, I noticed they were over a little bit on, over the bid or uh price, I believe.
On on a on a couple of the items, but uh we're paying them for exactly what they acknowledged, yep.
What they bid, okay, okay.
Just out of curiosity, what items were the, do you recall what they were?
I don't, I don't have any problem.
There's still a retention until they get uh five percent, until they get the work a hundred percent done?
Yes, this includes the retain, five percent retainage, yep, till final acceptance.
Alright. I'll make a motion to approve uh. Uh the contractor's estimate number one in the amount of, it's a hundred and thirty-four thousand four hundred ninety-five and eight cents. To the street improvement project at Second Avenue Northwest and alleys.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Motion by council member Batch, or second by council member Cowell to approve the contractor's estimate number one in the amount of one hundred and thirty-four thousand four hundred ninety-five dollars and eight cents. For the twenty eighteen street improvement project at Second Avenue Northwest and alleys. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All is known, motion carried. Item uh, the next item is approve or deny purchase and installation of no parking and speed limit signs around school and city parks. City Minister Melman?
Uh I think we'll have John, if you wanna come up and. Share with us. I know that in a previous council meeting uh this issue was brought up. And I think the council at that time directed Chief Pedersen to work with Kirby uh to come up with a plan. So I believe that's what John will be presenting.
There might be one short on that, but generally it's the same thing as what you have up there.
You have it?
Yeah. The only additional sheets that are included in the packet that I just passed out. Um include some maps that resemble these.
Oh yeah.
Pat, I didn't know if you'd seen these or not. So I guess just in general, the delay of the purchase of these items has kind of been due to two things. We put a call into the Department of Transportation and they said that there is a. A study that's supposed to be concluded before the installation of these, so we're gonna call this the study, cause I haven't heard back from them. Uh the other concerns that we had were some discussion came up every time we talked to somebody about what time of day restriction we want. For the speed limit to be uh regulating traffic around the school. So some options that were thrown out there were the seven or seven thirty AM to four PM. Uh the during events or when children are present or during school hours. Uh we've seen all types of these in different arrangements around different schools and different uh districts. So we were looking for some guidance from you guys.
I mean, I think we should keep it consistent with whatever our signs say for the no parking.
I I would point out that uh talking to the principal, his suggestion was along those lines, um that it would be during the seven thirty to four PM timeframe. Um just to share his point of view.
I guess I differ on that. I I feel like if we put something into place, it's gonna be confusing to people if we put, you know, twenty miles an hour during that. And then what about all the events that happen at the school pretty much every single night? Um if you throw twenty miles an hour out there just period for like what, three, four blocks, five blocks? I mean, and then just have it consistent all the time so that people know it's twenty miles an hour period and that's it, and not go with.
Including the summer?
Yeah, including the summer. It gets people used to it.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah.
Right, so I mean, you're being inconsistent and it's not like, oh well, it's, you know, eight oh one, now I gotta go twenty. Or it's seven fifty-nine, I can still go thirty, you know?
I I I agree with what you're saying.
Right, I agree with that. If we're putting a timeframe on it, I guess, but if we don't have to.
Go to twenty mile an hour and that's the way it is. Because someone's gonna say, well, my watch said it was twenty-seven, twenty-eight, it's not those. Why even deal with all that?
Yeah.
Go to twenty mile an hour.
School zone.
Yeah, that school zone is twenty mile an hour, that's that.
School zone, twenty mile an hour.
Well, and because, I mean, even though school's not in session in the summertime, there's still other activities that are going on, on and around the school. And facilities like camps and different things, so I mean, it's not like it's a dead zone, even when school's not in session. So I guess that's, that would be my piece.
Is there a chance that whatever we prefer, the city, the state would come in and say, you can't do it that way?
I don't think so. I th- I think it's pretty much based on the local uh government to make a decision.
Discussion, yeah.
Uh we had had a conversation that brought up a little bit more controversy if it was a county state aid highway that came through town maybe. Or if it was a like highway five, obviously they're gonna regulate what we can and can't do, but.
Right, right.
I'm of the belief um that I think this is gonna be okay. It's not a county road on Second Avenue. Anything surrounding the school is all city owned, so I think we're okay that way.
Is that the consensus of the council? They just go with school zone and twenty mile an hour?
Oh.
And then I guess the other thing in here is like the maps, so which map do you guys like the best?
Well, and just to clarify too, um the one map that I handed out to you, and I don't know if it's in that packet.
This one?
Uh Pat.
I don't think so.
Yeah, I just kinda threw this one in here. Uh yeah, it's the one that the school's own up on it here. The the green area is obviously indicating the school. The purple dots that are kind of strewn around there, those are locations that Kirby and I had discussed of possible locations to put the signs. These aren't actual like final decisions of of where we're gonna do it. Uh there was some discussion to put them up on East Douglas, east of Second Avenue because of the path that the students take. Um as we were talking about that, we were just more of the opinion that it's only a two block area. And it probably doesn't need its own designation, but again, looking for some some guidance from you guys. There was also some discussion about uh, you know, this feeding out into the park system. And I was wondering if we could maybe maybe hold off on that one till another time and we can get a little bit better educated on this, the park zones and. You know, what we wanna look at for those.
I think we, West Chandler could maybe use some. Up at my house. Um if the buses are still going there especially, um let's switch ways that, that way, of the school.
To the west side of the school?
Yeah, there's a lot, there's quite a bit of traffic there in the morning especially and in the afternoon. And then buses in the afternoon, uh there's quite a few of them there as well.
Buses don't use West Brooks at all anymore, do they?
What's up? West Brooks?
Yeah.
No, I don't think so.
No, I think they use Chandler.
They they use Chandler, yeah.
It's all Chandler.
To come in.
So I, yeah, I do uh believe their primary route is that West Chandler from highway five up Third Avenue, cutting through the parking lot. And then exiting and going out to highway five down Second Avenue to the south.
Yep.
Uh so if we. If we kind of focus our speed limit signs around the direct perimeter of the school and. That West Chandler one block, would would that be?
Yeah, well, you'd imagine that that first block, the buses or cars wouldn't hopefully come up to speed by then, but if they.
Well, there's a, there's a stop sign though, right, at West Chandler and Fourth, so there's.
Going west?
Going east and west, well, east from five.
Yeah, so yeah, when they're coming from five towards the school, there's a stop sign.
Okay.
And then from the stop sign to the to the school, maybe it's twenty mile an hour. That's just my thought.
Sure. Well, yeah, the stop sign will slow them down, but then they'll speed up or whatever, knowing that there's nothing coming up unless there's a sign there.
We'll have John around the corner get a ride, my ticket. His fundraiser.
He's usually inside at that point during the day.
Remember, tickets are not fundraisers.
Well, this is gonna be a special account. This is Arlington account, this is not a state account.
So we're talking Chandler would be from Fourth Avenue to Third Avenue. And it would be eastbound. From fourth to to third, and then we're thinking along Douglas uh on the north side of the lot there. Pretty much the rest of the perimeter around the school. Okay, and I think the number of signs that we had listed um on this sheet. Should accommodate. What we were looking for. Um I saw in your uh ordinance or your your council agenda. You had uh put in here not to exceed twenty-five hundred dollars for this item.
Mm-hmm.
I, if we're going to remove the seven to four PM lower portion of that sign. There's gonna be some savings that goes there, which would allow us to actually purchase a couple more signs um and stay well within that twenty-five hundred dollar budget, so. Was there any other concerning areas that any of you had preferences for? I mean, I think we're gonna be hitting Second Avenue north and south with signs that'll be pretty well pasted along there. Uh Douglas will get, uh Alden will get. We weren't sure if we needed to put anything on Third Avenue on that south west side of the school where the old awning is. Just because it's such a short section anyways, but if you prefer us consistent all the way around, we could, we can look at that also.
Yeah, I don't, honestly, there's there's not a lot of traffic there, I and you probably know better than I as far as foot traffic or anything like that in the morning. Or in the afternoon or during events. I mean, I I think that most of the traffic is on the north side of the building. Um cause that's where people or everybody is pretty much, other than staff, are directed to go.
We may see some increased traffic once the theater starts being used more.
Mm-hmm.
Uh and there's events that that would be on that end of the school, so.
Right.
Might not be a bad idea just to be consistent around the building and put one on either side of the school or the street at that location.
And which location was that again then?
Uh would be the Third Avenue uh northwest, but it would be along the southwest side of the building.
By the old main.
Okay, oh, there is one there right now.
The that twos, yeah.
Indicated there right now, is it? Yeah.
Um. So I see that there's signs on East Douglas going towards like the um practice facilities for the football.
That's where we had, we had talked about the potential for putting them. Um I I don't know that.
I mean, it's residential anyhow, I mean, I like the idea. There's always a lot of kids, whether it be band students, FIDE students.
Well, and if you're talking about school activity, that is probably one of the most traveled routes for the band practice, the.
A lot of kids use that.
Yeah, just to and from the fields.
Yep.
Now, these are gonna be put up, uh, by our subcontractor that we deal with, those city signs, is that?
Uh, we did, yeah, we did add that in contracted work to install, was estimated at six hundred dollars.
I think I saw that somewhere. Okay.
Um.
And you just sort of.
And I'm not sure who that is that Kirby uses, but.
Um, Peterson from Glendale.
Okay.
John Peterson.
All right, ready?
Close to Peterson, so in case Peterson can't make it, hopefully Henderson.
Maybe I can borrow his tools.
And do you think that they'd be up yet this year?
Let's shoot for June and next year.
They've not been ordered yet.
I'm the stand-in.
How you gonna have frozen ground?
I'm guessing they've not been ordered yet.
You gotta put posts in.
I don't believe they have been ordered because we were still looking at, you know, which signs.
Right.
There's a few different options in this, this book that he has, um, so we could make our own, we could customize them.
I know Kirby was initially worried that he had exceeded his budget, but. I think we told him that, that's fine, this is something that the council wants, so, yeah, that's not an issue.
The only thing I'd suggest is if it's, if, if possible, I mean, Peterson has extra time that he gets the posts in the ground, he can always go around after that.
Yeah.
And both, both signs on.
Yeah, cause if he waits till January, he's gonna have a tough time putting them, or it's gonna cost a lot more money.
Yeah.
Right. Right.
So if you give him the location, he gets the post in the ground.
At the correct height, he can just go around that ground.
If he used the hot, you know, I don't know.
Great idea.
I don't know if he could do the posts in the ground.
He's got, I don't know, before he gets it.
And that's, if, if, yeah.
Four signs on.
Right, also.
Oh, good, you done it, great idea.
Well, no, then that'll.
Yeah, they're gonna do it the next month.
Make sure that they, it gets done.
Mm-hmm.
So we're not waiting till next spring.
Yeah, the post should be.
You know, Jason, can they put, like, posts in, in the ground for like, street signs in January or February? That's not a problem?
They blast right through the frost, huh?
Well, you gotta heat them up.
No, they can install them, I can't say it's, it's just as easy, but it definitely can be done. I don't know if they charge you more. Well, that's not, if they're gonna start doing this extra work, it's fun.
Probably.
It's like any private utility frost charges installation, or they can do things, it just takes more effort. Yeah, well, as long as we know what we're gonna do, we might as well get ahold of the guy, if he's got time to put those posts in. We might as well get them in as soon as we can, we know we're gonna need them.
Yeah.
Right.
And I'm sure it's less when there's no frost in ground than probably when there is frost on the ground.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase and installation of, um, the speed limit signs around school. Um, not to exceed twenty-five hundred dollars, um, with funding from account two-two-six, street signs and maintenance. I'd also like to add that if we can get the, um, posts in the ground ASAP before the signs can then.
John and I can take, take team Kirby on that and make sure that when he gets back, he touches on it.
January one, have them done. I'll second what.
First by council member Bachelor, second by council member Halesstead, to approve the purchase and installation of no parking and speed limit signs around school and city parks for not, for amount not to exceed twenty-five hundred dollars. From incoming from account two-two, two-two-six, street signs and installations, or maintenance, I'm sorry. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all papers say aye.
Aye.
Close no, motion carried. Yep. Uh, Jason, would you wanna come forward please and we'll deal with.
We save the best for last, Jason.
Nobody else wanted to sit through this, I can't imagine.
All right, um. Try to find my place on the.
Fifteen.
Well, I say my fifteen is the E D A committee, say a little P S E go.
So, make it fourteen.
You got a whole one.
That's what I print out of. So anyhow, Jason is here to discuss the potential street project. Um, they can, but I believe you.
Council members, we had a workshop, uh, just the other day, and we've had, uh, quite a bit of discussion, and I think, uh, uh, over the summer. Uh, kinda weighing the two options of Clinton and Baker, which Jason brought to us, uh, uh, earlier, talking about the. Trying to tackle that issue of standing water in the streets. And also, we, we're weighing that with the issues that we're, we were experiencing on Chandler and Six. We believe that through doing a smaller project, we've addressed the issues on Chandler and Six. And so, uh, now we are taking a look at the possibility of working on, uh, uh, Baker and Clinton, which is a more expensive project. But, uh, it has to all be done at once in order to gain the benefit that we're looking to achieve. One of the items that came up at our last meeting was to have Shannon Sweeney look at our finances and our bonds and, uh, have him make a recommendation. That is included in the packet. That you, uh, that you have basically, uh. To, to summarize what Shannon is, uh, relaying is that the city certainly could tackle a bigger project like this at, uh. Uh, two point three, almost two point four, uh, million. If we simply, uh, had some bonds expire, they would simply take the place of those, so. There would not be, uh, additional money, but it would be rolling over, uh, a previous bond and that would take care of this. Shannon, I believe, did say that, you know, once we do this project, because it is bigger, we maybe wanna hold off on doing any projects for three to four years afterwards, but. With that said, Jason has put together a nice schedule for us and has, uh, provided some more background information. I'll turn it over to Jason and let him.
Yeah, thank you, Pat. Um, just looking back again after our last work session, um, at that particular feasibility report and. You know, it, the drainage of the current storm sewer outlet for that area is almost a hundred acres. I mean, it's ninety-plus acres that all drain underneath that mobile home facility. With this project, we would be obviously addressing a new storm sewer outlet that directly impacts around thirty or about a third of that property. Gets removed from that, so the, the, the whole region benefits from this project, it does. Because we're talking about sixty, there are thirty-plus, uh, acres less going underneath the mobile home park, and so all those other areas are, you're gonna be some relief there, so. I think this project, you know, I was just, you know, talking to some of the previous engineers, uh, in this area, and this is just an area that we really haven't addressed. And, uh, you know, I think it's been talked about, and, uh, we did some good things with two thousand fifteen project, getting a storm sewer outlet, and that's just kinda what this project is as well, so. I think it, it, you know, if it's, uh, financially feasible, it's a great project, uh, reading through, uh, Mr. Sweeney's letter. Certainly appears to be in line with those dropping off, so I guess I'm here to answer any other questions, otherwise take direction from you, and. We do have that aggressive schedule, um, that we've talked about, but it's very, very realistic. And we'll work very diligently to, uh, ensure we stay on that schedule and put ourselves in the best bidding environment that we can. Again, there's no guarantees, but. As we go through this whole process, there are stopping points, and, you know, if, if for some reason, uh, something happens, or we don't think the costs are right. The work that we do can just be used at a later date, so it's not like we're just doing work that'll never be used, so. And that's what this four twenty-nine process does, it allows those various stopping points, uh, where we bring the public in, talk about it, and make it their project. We hold that open house here at, at City Hall, invite everybody to come in to look at where, what we're doing, um, understand it. Provide any input that we could potentially incorporate into the design, and that works really well for our city projects, so. When we get into construction, that everybody's well aware of the projects that are happening, and we're, you know, we're building it for them, and so. You know, we really like to engage the public through that process, and, um, if we continue on that, we're bidding, you know, the first. The end of March, the first of April, uh, which Pat and I were talking about, kinda the bidding environment, what, what's a good time, what's not? And again, everything's historical. Um, I don't like to bid anything in December and January if I can avoid it, because frankly, the contractors are working all the way up through December. They take a break, they go on vacation, I mean, they've worked hard, they're really not looking at new projects in January. They're starting in February and March and then April and rounding it out in May for their work essentially, so. I think, uh, the schedule's very realistic and we'll work hard to keep on it. Um, if we do authorize this tonight. I am going to initiate the topographic survey even before you authorize the plans, just to get it done before snow happens. So, I think we're just gonna kinda jump on that, and then we hold that improvement hearing the seventeenth of December. I could start design immediately after that, cause I would have all of the surface information. And again, if we don't use it with this one, that information is good, we could just use that at whatever date we decided to do the project, and. I would also bring in a drone to fly that, so that we have a brand-new aerial photo that we use for design, for representation purposes. For discussions with the property owners. Um, that shows every crack in every driveway, so if somebody comes and saying, well, there's a new crack in my driveway, we'll go back to the picture and see exactly what it is. We do that immediately after, we mark all the private utilities, so we know where everything is, and, and it works very well, and it's very, very quick. And the amount of information we get is, is extraordinary, so. We would be doing that probably before the feasibility report is even presented, but that's, you know, it takes about two hours for them to fly it, and they get all kinds of good information, so.
You have to get permission from the city first.
I do, I get a permit from Pat, I've talked to him about it already, yeah, I read about the ordinance before, in the council meetings, yeah.
Yeah, we have that up, we have the books, yeah, that's it.
So, yeah, it's, it's, and all, uh, you know, in all other communities, we always let City Hall know, we let the police know, so that everybody knows what's going on. If they see one and people call, it's like, what's going on? That everybody knows, and that's just being transparent, so. With that, I'll certainly open up to any other questions that you guys had about it.
Council members, I don't know if this would be of any value to you, I've got our two thou, our capital improvement plan, and I've got kind of a look at our overall two thousand nineteen, uh. Projects and, uh, staff costs. But again, what, uh, Chan Sweeney indicates is that this would simply, uh, roll into, uh, a bond that would be paid off. And so this would not necessarily require any, uh, new additional money, it would just be a continuation of funds that are already being paid, so. That's an option if you'd like to take a quick look at that, or if you feel comfortable.
Well, I know this project's been long overdue, I mean, they've been talking about this for the past thirty, forty years, and nothing's been touched down there.
I'd agree.
So, I, I mean, if we can bond it out, knowing that needing to be responsible in the future, we're not gonna look at another street project in. Probably four years.
At least, yeah.
At least, or at least a major one. That, that's gotta be. Realized, I, I'm curious to, to know what the Streets Committee came up with at their meeting regarding this.
I'm gonna speak to the.
How they were, how, how, how they were leaning, that's, yeah, I mean, I'm assuming.
Okay.
I think, I think we were leaning to the point of doing that project.
Okay.
Now, as long as Shannon and Sweeney thought we could afford that direction. That was pretty much, I, my understanding was, let's get it done. I mean, if, if the other bonds are dropping off and this one takes over those, you know, and, and, and I think, as you said. You know, we're gonna have to be pretty careful for three, four years, it might be four years, but if we put this off now, we're just delaying everything else. We're, we just keep pushing it down the road. We've already pushed it down the road, how long? It's not gonna get any cheaper two years from now, more than likely, or a year or whatever. So, my.
Even though it's coming right past my front door, I'm, uh, I, I'm encouraged by the fact that it's being addressed. With, with a larger, you know, larger of the pipe, just, um, do it right and.
Well, it's gonna get.
Do it large enough and don't fiddle with trying to snake under the, you know, the trailer park and, and that type of thing, and improving things there, that makes more of a direct path, I, I like that. Oh, my wife, sorry. You'll get to meet her.
Talk with her in the open house, it'll be fun.
She's a very birdie.
Good. I look forward to it as well.
Pile all the dirt in his yard.
We know where to keep them, yeah, stored materials in his yard.
Level out all the low spots, so, yes. So if I might, uh, that's me, Jason would basically just going down Clinton all the way down to. Again, the street, just on the, um.
Creekview Lane.
E.
Creekview Lane.
Creekview Lane.
We'll go right through the cul-de-sac by, um, um.
A lensing's lived down there.
Danny Kiddock lensing, all those in there.
Danny Kiddock.
Kiddocks.
Oh, sure, okay.
Right through the cemetery.
Down from Young Chirping, the loop.
And on the.
Drop right into the.
South side of the cemetery.
So we aren't gonna do, basically, there's a couple laterals going off on Second Avenue. And Third Avenue.
Right.
On either side.
Yep. We are changing the elevations of Clinton Street, uh, through both of those areas, and really to tie back, we need to extend it all the way back to those radiuses. On those adjacent streets, so we could go halfway, I mean, and I looked at that, so how could I reduce the cost, and we could go. You know, halfway to like these alleys here and not do this, and maybe tie it in halfway, but I just, we're not accomplishing, you know, uh, the bang for the dollar to get it. All of those blocks done there, uh, the, the utilities along with the storm sewer, cause we have storm sewer lines planned coming off of each one of these. Up to the, to help serve some of this area here in the existing storm sewer lines, so, you know, we could, you know, we gotta raise this intersection, this is the intersection right here, that's about two feet low, right? And we're gonna create a, a, an overflow, so that gets this direction, we're gonna be also lowering this very slightly probably to get water to overland. So when the storm sewer gets inundated, it'd overtop and overtop, and then go this direction all the way down, so. We're, had to do both of these blocks, just really to make those tie-ins, um, because we are changing those elevations at those intersections and could only. We could chase it back a hundred feet, but yep, we're just spending a hundred feet in, that would have to be redone in the future, so.
So that's gonna take a lot of pressure off of the Baker Street storm sewer and.
That's exactly right, so, yeah, I don't have that inundation map, I will show that with the feasibility report. Again, the feasibility report will have more detail of this, but you see, these are the green lines, that's the storm sewer that all comes down here and goes, you know, this direction. Where is that? Yeah, this, this is the, this is the mobile home facility right here, that goes underneath here and, and outlets to Highland Creek here and in, so. All of this area now won't have all of these lines connected to it, so we're talking about this whole region here that has this new outlet. This region up here will be able to drain through its existing lines, and if you recall, we did televise these that went underneath here to see if there was any, you know, extreme collapsed pipes. And they were sound and true, um, you know, they're not necessarily sized to handle ninety-plus acres, so, uh, when we relieve that with this, this will function better.
So everything coming from the north will still go into this whole, this line?
It will indeed, yes.
Okay.
Yep. I gotta use my pointer, I like this, fun.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's long overdue, I think that we should. I, I'm ready to authorize a feasibility report for the twenty nineteen street and, uh, utility improvement project.
Are, are you?
Yeah, that's my motion, yeah.
Motion, yeah.
You made a motion?
I made a motion.
I will second that motion.
First by council member Bachelor, second by council member Halesstead, to approve authorizing feasibility report for twenty nineteen street and utility improvement project. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all papers say aye.
Aye.
Close no, the motion is carried.
Go get them.
Yep, I'll see you guys in two weeks.
Thanks, Jason.
Actually, could, could we, uh, possibly just jump down to an item that we're gonna bring up under open discussion while Jason is still here?
Sure.
Um, one of the items that, uh, I was just going to inform the council about is the, uh, fact that, uh. That we have a. that we have a a pond, a drainage pond located north of town. We have received a request from the fairgrounds uh to go ahead. What they would like to do is they'd like to take some of the water off of their parking lot and they would, in the parking area, they would like to uh run that into a stormwater uh drain that runs out to that uh pond. That pond was purchased by the city some time ago. Uh it's approximately two acres of land, but the shape of the uh stormwater pond is kind of rectangular in size. Uh we've been spending some time trying to figure out exactly what the restrictions were in terms of the water that's being put into there. Uh what we have been made aware of is that we're, we don't know of any uh previous concerns about there being too much water in that pond. And so with that in mind, I think that the, there's been some discussion uh among Rich, Jason uh and myself about uh going ahead and possibly approving the fairgrounds to do that. Their hope was to get in there this fall and that's obviously a limited timeline. So um I guess I would just open it up for Jason or Rich to have further discussion and to see if you have any concerns, council members, about uh them going ahead and doing that with the thought that if there is an issue, that we deal with it after it becomes an issue versus at this point, assuming that it is an issue.
At their cost or ours?
Totally their cost.
Totally their.
Any any uh damage or uh anything that would be done to curb or uh uh bypass the street to to dig in or to hook up to the uh storm sewer would be totally at their cost to repair. Um just a comment on the type of, they are they are planning on seepage lines typically as you put in farmland seepage lines. So if you're talking about seven or eight-inch rain flooding into that uh pond because of this additional work the fair board is gonna do, it won't happen. They're talking about putting lines in that actually take water that's under the surface and seeping through uh slits into the pipe. So it's gonna be a minimal drainage. It's gonna help them out and it's gonna lower their water cable a little bit. And but it does it very, very slowly uh as opposed to a storm sewer. Uh you know, the uh catch basin that just takes the water as fast as it comes. So I really don't, personally, don't think there's gonna be any issue or any problem with it.
Yes. We ended up having a little more water in there than we anticipated in the pond. Could that pond then be dredged out some to accommodate? Because I'm sure it's filled in over the years. Could could that be dredged out to accommodate so many more thousands or whatever of ga- cubic feet of water?
Uh I believe so. That the area, and I think it was news to all of us, that it was actually secured by the city. I think we originally, I found an easement document that drafted the the footprint of the pond, which is a square. But actually, the pond is just constructed, it's like the size of a hot dog through there, diagonal in there. But the city owns all of that property. So there's plenty of property to expand that pond in there, I believe. And from, I mean, uh uh some of my uh caution through this is, well, is there any agreements with that landowner on what could be done? And within that easement, well, it sounds like we own the property. So from that perspective, we have a lot of flexibility within that property to expand upon and help that area out in the future if that's needed.
That was only my concern, if it was needed. But if we have adjoining property, we, it shouldn't be a problem.
Yeah, I believe there's there's room to expand that pond there. And what they're asking, they've provided a a handwritten sketch. To the mayor's point, it is uh essentially to drain underground groundwater out of there. Um and to make that ground a little bit firmer so they could drive on it when it's after it's rained. It's, you know, it's a little bit firmer. So I think that's their intention in tying into the storm sewer that goes through that pond. So uh in light of understanding the city owns that pond and there's an easement through those storm sewer lines, I think there's a some flexibility if indeed we do run into problems. But, you know, we've had significant rains over the past few years. I think we're well aware of that. And and I don't know that there's been any issues with the adjacent farm fields related to that pond. Um I think you've asked, uh Pat, you've asked that same question and haven't heard of anything.
Not yet.
Not yet. So um from that perspective, I think we're in pretty good shape.
So could you point on the map like where, what parking lot they're talking about?
It's the area straight south of the uh Bull Riding Arena. So it'd be between Good Sam and Bull Riding Arena there's.
Oh, so the grassy area where people.
Yeah. The grassy area that's immediately east of the track itself.
Just north of Good Sam.
Good Sam.
Just north of Good Sam's and just uh just right around that that rodeo area there. Yep.
Okay.
It's not changing any drainage patterns.
Still going right through my backyard.
That area. This area currently drains out to the storm sewer overland. So it's not like we're switching, you know, bringing an area that currently didn't drain here, so.
So who or what is all draining to that that pond right now? Is that neighborhood up there draining to that pond?
Yeah, this is Lynch's Division here and and a portion of Seventh here in this area.
Okay.
And then uh Jim's subdivision up here drains through an eighteen-inch that goes out to that pond as well.
Can you tell me if Elgin Street um uh and, let's see, El- Elgin and the doctor of Van Morley has some issues with drainage and his, near his property, if that was out there also?
Oh. It would be.
Worth the cash.
It does, yes. Okay. That's a separate issue. That's not.
Some of those, that storm sewer there, there maybe has some uh challenges in the size of it.
There is something wrong there.
Right, well.
It can do.
Well, that's another dead end where.
Majority of this area down here all drains through a twelve line, twelve inch out to here. The subdivision uh where uh Jim lives drains through an eighteen inch to this pond. So all of this area is is draining via twelve inch. We're talking about forty-two inch pipes. I mean, we're talking about storm sewer that's sized appropriately. So the issues with these areas is it's undersized storm sewer, which was built.
And what would have caused an undersized storm sewer to be built there? I mean, why would, you know, that's not that old a development. Why would it have been undersized?
Cost-effectiveness. Didn't wanna pay to have the right-sized pipes in. I'm speculating. I I don't know their reasons, but usually you only install smaller pipes and tiles. I mean, back in the seventies and eighties, they drain subdivisions through tiles. Well, what's acceptable, right? What is the level of a, you know, well, it drains down slow. We're willing to deal with some pounding water and as long as it doesn't break our pocketbook. Again, I'm just, those are just speculations. But more than likely, you know, if we're we're looking at a storm that that subdivision drains through, it's probably a a less, well, less than a two-year design if it's all drained through a twelve inch.
Right, I'm still concerned about the um the catch basins just to the north of Good Sam's. So it's kind of a low spot. Anytime we get a three, four-inch rain, there's a foot and a half, two feet of water settling in the road.
Yep.
And they do drain after several hours, but um.
That makes sense.
That's because of the undersized pipe.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I I just think, well, here again, I'm a I'm a hydrologist engineer.
Aren't we all?
In my dreams, you know, and I think there's somewhere between Seventh Avenue Northwest and where it goes under Lynch. There's there's some blockage or.
Could be.
And that could, that could be found with televising.
Could be, yes. It sure could be. I mean, this is a a project I would anticipate in the future is looking at the drainage of that area. Um and, you know, I don't know if we wanna authorize that tonight or, okay.
But that's what we, you know, if we're waiting three or four years for the next large project.
It could be, it could be an area, right. I mean, talking to those residents, we could maybe do some televising, you know, as well, you know, over the years and and start to look at and and identify some things, just kind of picking away at it and and then understand what we could do. You know, doing a small drainage study up in that area, so.
Back to the fairgrounds. If, how could I diplomatically say this? If they were to run one of their lateral lines behind Good Sam's and put in a little catch basin back there, would that help alleviate the problem with Good Sam's?
Or would it make it worse? It would make it worse because you're you're dealing with another outlet.
Yeah. Um Good Sam's and the and the fairgrounds drain through the pipe we installed in two thousand fifteen. It it's a dividing line here where Good Sam's is that goes south and this area goes to the north. So um there were, it's delicate in there.
Yeah.
Just to not send water a direction that it normally didn't go. So that's the dividing line is right there by Good Sam's. So we'd have to look at that.
I was trying to figure out if somebody's digging back there already, you know, would it be possible? But um I know Good Sam's, it looks like the back of their lot is a little lower than the road. And there should be a little swell to get the water to run out to the road.
Well, I think this is, this issue, we certainly don't wanna.
But I.
Small, this is a smaller request. It's a different request than drainage on the fairgrounds. This is just draining groundwater.
Anyhow, I I think we should approve the uh fairgrounds.
Through a city-owned pond.
I would, I would agree.
Do we need to?
And just a question.
It's not on the agenda though.
No, it wasn't. It wasn't on the agenda.
So they can't.
But it's not expending city money.
Yeah, no, no, it's nothing that means to be done.
Consensus.
And there's no formal permit.
Do we, we have to wait to approve something here before they can even start their recruitment?
No.
No.
Well, they can start whenever they want now. Oh, that's good. The phone stops ringing.
They don't need anything from us. Start digging.
Just to call, yeah.
Just to call and agreement that they pay for.
Yeah, so the point is it's draining through a city-owned pond, not through an area in a field that we don't know who exactly owns. We know the city owns that. So that's good information, I think, to make educated decisions on this.
And wasn't the initial discussion that they were trying to allev- alleviate the water inside the track?
Turn two, I think.
Yeah, that's not a project.
Okay.
I think turn two is the problem.
That's totally separate from.
That's not in the sketch, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so is it the consensus of the council to let them go ahead with their with their drainage? Okay, that's it.
Thank you. Thanks, Jason.
Let the minutes read the uh accordingly.
See you in a couple of weeks.
If it is.
We don't have to give up the work to them having access to that.
It's their own property and they're, but they're putting it into our.
But it's our property. That's what I'm asking.
It will be communicated to them that they are responsible for any and all damages.
Correct.
Or modifications of the property.
It'll be an email to them.
Or modifications of the city property.
Means they have to put it back the way it was, to dig it up. So we can't just leave a chunk of of uh curbing out or leave a road that's dug up.
Whatever you take out, you replace.
That's right. Okay, um where are we? We're on uh, I don't remember. It's on fifty percent.
Thirteen.
My piece of paper, it's on twelve and it is approved to deny twenty nineteen employee health insurance.
Right.
Okay, I'm just gonna go by title, not number.
There you go.
Commissioners, we've we've had some lengthy discussions, commissioners, council members. We've had some lengthy, it's getting late, I guess. Uh we've had some some lengthy dis- discussions with South Central Services, uh Co-op. We actually had at one point uh three, three, actually four, four of their staff come out and talk with us. Mich- Michelle was there as well. Uh you know, obviously, our concern is the fact that last year we saw a twenty percent increase. And this year, we are seeing another twenty percent increase in employee health insurance. Uh we have done as much as we can to dig in to find out why is it that we're receiving a twenty percent increase. Uh in talking with uh Wendell, who's the director of South Central Services Co-op, he indicates, you guys do not have high claims. You're doing what you can. You're doing everything right. You're being impacted by the small group uh uh fee and and it's not anything that you're doing. Uh in talking to him, you know, we oftentimes compare with what's happening in other communities. Uh some other communities got a nine percent increase. We got a twenty percent increase. Uh in talking with Wendell, he has indicated that even with your twenty percent increase, you're still paying less than that community that got a nine percent increase. So we have a good health insurance program for employees and uh we are getting hit with another twenty percent. Uh but we are still very, very well within reason for the cost of health insurance. Uh working with Todd Sandin, I did, not Todd Sandin, Zimmerman, uh Todd Zimmerman. We did take a look at other uh insurance rates that were available from some of the other providers. We are not able to come up with anything um better than what we have been offered through uh South Central Services Co-op. So uh I would make a a recommendation and uh you can certainly have further discussion to go ahead and to uh proceed with the uh proposal that is offered by South Services Co-op, which would be to take our current um uh single health insurance rate, which is at four hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty cents, and approve a two thousand nineteen health insurance rate of five hundred and sixty-three dollars. Also, uh dealing with our family insurance rate, which for two thousand eighteen was one thousand one hundred and seventy-three, and uh approving the increase in that rate to one thousand four hundred and six dollars and fifty cents. So that is a roughly a twenty percent increase in both of those uh health plans.
So I think the other thing that I took out of the meeting is that even though we've seen like, you know, two huge increases, we're still below the market value. So if we were to go somewhere else and grab it, the healthcare, but there are things that we can do in the future to look at what we, what plan that we have to kind of bring it down or or shift or um I suppose customize any way that we want to, and they're very flexible with that. Um but I think for the price, it's, we're still below, we're still below what others are paying, so.
The the only change from last year's health insurance to this year's health insurance is that they limit acupuncture, acupuncture treatments to uh twenty, and they also are adding four new wellness programs, uh which will be promoting to employees uh probably in January and February. Nice thing is that uh the city of Arlington is insured by South Central Services Co-op. So is the school at Cibley East. So we're looking at the possibility if we can maybe work together on some different things, so.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty nineteen employee health insurance.
I'll second it.
Motion by Councilmember Batcher, seconded by Councilmember Yashewski to approve the uh twenty nineteen health insurance with a nineteen, twenty-nine percent increase resulting in a five hundred and sixty-three dollars for single coverage and fourteen hundred and six dollars and fifty cents for family health insurance coverage. Is there further discussion?
I will just note that employees were invited to that meeting that Michelle attended and uh there were several employees there. So they heard firsthand it, the explanation.
Well, I think it's, you know, if you, who hasn't listened or watched the political ads, number, the number one thing that people complain about, I shouldn't say complain, what kind of meant complain about uh statewide is health insurance, health, cost of healthcare. It's not just here. This is just a symptom of it, so. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close no. Motion carried. All right.
Okay.
Next one on my list is transferring an investment account from Morgan Stanley to RBC Wealth Management.
Council members, included in your packet was a uh letter dated October first from Morgan Stanley. In that letter, the city is being notified that they are no longer able to service uh certain government entity accounts. Um we had several different investments with Morgan Stanley and we had been working with Roseanne Kelly and another individual there for quite some time. Uh we received this notice at the same time that we're also contacted by Roseanne Kelly and her uh colleague that they were moving over to another business, uh RSB or RBC Wealth Management. Uh I have taken some steps to try and investigate what other options we have. Uh, in doing so, I reached out to League of Minnesota Cities. I did not hear back from them. I did contact, uh, Lori Young, who said that, uh, she uses Steve Olmsted from Edward and Jones out of, uh, uh, Gaylord. And, uh, also heard from, um, Jenny at the city of Winthrop that they use Shannon Sweeney for some of their investments. So, I'm providing you with several options. One option, uh, is to work with, uh, Roseanne Kelly, who we have worked with. I don't know, uh, you know, how it came to be that we have had this relationship initiated. But, uh, we have worked well with her and, uh, Rich Nolton. And so I leave it up to you to, uh, elect who we should proceed to work with in the future.
Are these the only companies out there that, um, we have access to or, I mean, are there more?
There are certainly more. There are certainly more.
I mean, I kind of like the idea of going with someone pretty local like Steve and Gaylord. However, there's other local Edward Jones and Glan- and Glanco and other places or whatever too. I guess my feeling is that I'd like a little bit more information. It looks like that we have time, two more months yet.
Have you talked to Steve?
I have not.
Okay.
Nope.
I'd like, I'd like.
I'm, I'm familiar with him and I, I think he does a good job, but I guess I would like to, I agree with you, I would like to see.
What kind of, uh, dollars are we talking about for investments that we have?
Uh, we're talking about significant, uh, typically what we do is we look to invest, uh, uh, two hundred thousand. Because once we go above that dollar amount, then the amount that we're insured for, uh, drops off. So we probably have, I would say, eight to ten investments, eight to ten different event, investments in that dollar amount.
So I mean, it's in significant, I'd really like to find out more about other, others. And maybe table this until, make a motion to table it until we get some more information. Reach out to others and see what they can do for us. Maybe have them come and present.
Okay, Councilmember Batcher has moved to table the, uh, investment account topic. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, uh, seconded by Councilmember Highland. To put this on the table then to a future date with more resources checked into. Is there any more discussion? During none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, no. Motion is carried, item is tabled. All right, next one I've been looking at here is consider recommendation from the EDA committee to contract sale of TSC building.
I received from Amy Newsom a recommendation. The EDA committee, uh, had some discussion and felt that it was in the city's best interest to look to a Realtor. Who has a stronger focus, focus on the metro area. And to consider doing a six-month agreement versus, uh, the year that we, uh, previously did for the sale of the TSC building. There have been, uh, a number of people going through, well, number, there have been people going through the building. Uh, Brenda does send me an email and lets me know when she is taking people through there. However, it hasn't been sold, so, uh, we continue to, to go on. The equipment, the building gets older. As we try and do what we can to, to sell it.
I like the six-month contract instead of the year. It's not tying us in. I'd even like to see a shorter term, but honestly, with the amount of money that they'll have invested, six months is probably fair.
Did Amy have any suggestions of Realtors or?
Commercial Realtors towards the city?
Yes, it's closer to the city.
Not specifically, no.
Is a, uh, is a metro Realtor gonna wanna come out here?
Well, I mean, I, I, it's more along the lines of a commercial metro. Not, not what we've had, like, I think, who did we, that, uh, Bellplane, I think, right, is who we're with now.
Feige.
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 Yeah, so I mean, something closer that's gonna, I think, I think the whole thought is, is that if the businesses in the metro. That really, the, the Realtors in the metro, those are the people that are potentially gonna come out. I mean, I don't, I don't know what else to do. We've, we've had the rural or had the outstate ones, now let's maybe try something from.
And I'd like to get their opinion on the price, cause we haven't adjusted the price in over, in a year. I mean, it's.
Couple of years.
That's, that's what I'd like to, I mean, we've had people look at this building.
Right.
I mean, I don't know if they do so-called exit interview, if they say no, but I would really like to ask those people. Is there, why didn't you come here? Is there something else we could have, what's the problem? Because there may be a, a lot of problem.
I think they're being told that an offer would be accepted, an offer would be.
They're, they're being told that, yeah, and they don't even make an offer. So, so why are we missing the boat? I don't think any, anybody knows that answer. And, and if it's something that's. On our end, I don't know what it could be, but let's say it is, you know, we could change to fifteen different Realtors and it's not going to make a difference. I just don't see how it's going to. I have no problem trying because right now, whatever we're doing for some reason isn't working. I'm sure if you went down to thirty thousand, you'd get rid of the building.
Well, what do we have to lose though by, by going?
No, I don't, I just.
We have nothing to lose.
I just like to get their opinion on the price, not, not set a, you know, this is our price. I'd like to ask them, wherever we go, what, what do you think the price should be?
Well, then maybe a nice recommendation would be to get a few, um, Realtors out here with their.
Right.
You know, with their, uh, info, with their information, what they feel, with their presentation for us. Why we should choose them and how much we should list it for based on their experience, maybe.
I mean, I wanna be realistic. You could tell me it's worth a hundred and fifty thousand. What's it worth if we wanna sell it in the next ninety days? That's the number I want.
Well, it's only worth whatever anybody's gonna pay for.
Yeah, but I know, but what I'm saying, you ask someone to come in and give you an estimate or a value of it. Well, yeah, it's worth a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Yeah, can we sell it for that realistically?
Yeah.
Probably not.
I think that's what I'm more looking for, is what do you think we can actually sell this?
If we wanna sell it in ninety days, what's our number?
Yeah, not what it's worth.
Forget the inflated stuff. Let's get down, because now we're coming into the heating season.
Yeah.
So we're gonna heat it a little bit. I mean, we keep losing, we're not that we're losing, but we keep dumping more money into this and we're getting nowhere. I mean, not that it's anybody's fault.
At the end of the day, it is gonna be a negative number instead of a positive number. We've already, we've acquired that building how many years ago?
But the sooner we get rid of it, the negative gets less. It's gotta go.
Right, absolutely.
All we need is one leak in the roof and then we got a liability, not a.
That's what I say, if someone walked in and said, here's forty thousand, I'll take it, I'd sign up.
Well, for sure. I mean, and I think we have those huge incentive programs out there too, but I just think we need a bigger audience.
When, uh, I was looking at my building and I ran into Randy Kubus out of Shakopee, um.
New Prague, yeah, he was.
New Prague.
He was one that was being considered.
Yeah, he gave us a bid, yeah.
Last time, last time, yep.
I was fairly impressed with him. I would say we should talk to him and maybe come up with some other names.
He gave us a bid last time.
Yeah.
Yes, he did.
Yeah, I, I would recommend that maybe, um, I would just throw it to Amy, give her some names and have her. Have her, um, come up with some, um, Realtors.
You know, there's Calhoun Realty, you know, they do a lot of commercial stuff and.
I think you'd wanna get someone from the southwest edge. You aren't gonna pull anybody out of Roseville.
Right.
Or Stillwater or no.
You know, Stillwater, yeah, you wanna stick with.
This end.
This end of the.
Somewhat close to us.
Yep, yep.
Even Blake Lee can put up a business. Oh, Blake Lee even can put up a business. And it's, people like to go there.
So do we need to make a motion on this? To give Amy authority, um, for the EDA committee to contact the, um. A Realtor, Realtor focusing more in the metro market for six months? That's my motion.
Sounds like a motion.
Or else seconded.
Second, yeah.
However, whatever.
So there is a motion necessary here? I don't know.
I don't know.
It doesn't matter either way, if, if you've already made the motion.
Sure I made it.
Adam, you.
Adam's seconded. Okay, motion made and seconded, made by Councilmember Batcher, seconded by Councilmember Powell. To, um, rec, are we recommending to the new meeting committee?
To Amy, to find someone.
Recommend Amy Newsom to, uh, engage a metro market, uh, real estate agency. Regard, in regard to, uh, listing the TSC building for three to six months.
Yep.
Uh, beginning January one.
Are there any other recommendations other than Randy?
Well, you know, you dine at realty, they're big. I don't know.
I mean, I would, I would just go with whoever Amy thinks. Leave it up to her.
I think Amy would have a good idea.
She's probably more in the ditches or more in the trenches than I am.
Yeah. I think so. I think you're right. Amy would know people.
Yep.
Okay, any more discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
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 If opposed, no. Motion carried. Item, next item is set special council meeting to canvass the twenty eighteen election results. What is the, uh, can we combine that? Does that mean you have to be for that purpose only?
Yes, and it's limited in terms of, uh. When it can be, um, so it has to be the window for, this is Friday, the ninth, after five P M. So Friday, November ninth, after five P M through Friday, the sixteenth.
Really? Just that week?
Yep, that week, so it has to be somewhere.
Cause why I was asking is if we could combine it with, we'd have a special board meet, or a council meeting and combine it with the, uh, discussion on the budget. Do it all in one.
Oh, good idea.
Being the eighth won't work, likely, for some, at least.
No, it doesn't.
Tuesday, the thirteenth. Tuesday, the thirteenth? Wouldn't, do you, do you, you work evenings, don't you, Adam?
I don't know.
You don't know? How does that work?
I don't really.
What days are good for you, Adam? And then we'll just see.
I don't know. Uh, not the eighth.
Not the eighth.
Well, I think, we can't have it till the ninth, right?
Correct, yeah.
But we can have it, uh, how about Monday?
That's about Tuesday.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
The thirteenth?
I've got something.
Tuesday, the thirteenth?
Wednesday, the fourteenth?
I could, I could make it to thirteen, I'll just.
I would be flexible Tuesday through Thursday next week.
Actually, Thursday would work best for me.
Thursday, there's cemetery and parks.
Cemetery and parks, maybe.
Yeah, and I'm going to Iowa.
Oh, yeah?
Well, buddy, yeah.
Yeah.
I wouldn't brag about going to Iowa.
I probably just wouldn't go. That's why birds fly upside down when they fly over Iowa, then you don't like it.
Yeah, they don't even, in Iowa.
Back to the meeting date.
Back to the meeting dates.
Fourteenth or fifteenth?
Fourteen.
Although the fifteenth's long.
I can't go around.
So the fourteenth?
I can't go the fourteenth.
No, Adam.
Oh, you got, no, you can't do the fourteenth?
That sounds to me like we can't have the meeting.
Thirteenth or fifteenth? Then we can't have it, you can't, oh yeah, we can have thirteenth.
Yep, you can have the thirteenth.
Okay.
Thirteenth, where?
Thirteenth, thirteen, thirteen?
Thirteen.
Tuesday the thirteenth?
Going once?
Sure.
Okay.
Oh, boy, what time? I've got a neurologist appointment to.
Early?
Is that a work earlier for you, Adam?
Uh, whatever, just, yeah.
Should we do like, uh, four o'clock, five o'clock? Would that work for you?
Earlier the better for Patty, he's gotta drive.
I'm fine with four o'clock.
On what day?
Thirteenth, Tuesday.
And then right after that, we would plan to have a budget?
Can we combine it? Just advertise for a special council meeting, where else? And the election and then the other, just the two items on the.
Or does it have to be separate?
I am not sure. I will check with Vicki.
So either one right on top of the other combined?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is four o'clock too early for you?
I don't wanna be, I don't wanna be difficult.
No, 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 it's.
My daughter's got a doctor's appointment at four forty-five, so it probably would be, yeah, I don't know, five thirty or six before available. I mean, I don't, I mean, if everything works for you guys, it's.
Six o'clock?
Six o'clock.
Well, I might have hospital board.
So that's what I'm saying, just set the meeting and, you know, we'll do the best we can to get as many people here as we.
You can just make, you get a quorum here and that side. If everybody can't make it, they can't make it.
Exactly.
We can't upset everybody's world.
And I don't think the canvassing takes very long.
No.
I would think that's a pretty quick deal.
So.
For, what time?
What time is it?
Just, yeah, just set the, set it to whatever you guys.
I don't care.
I don't care what day or what time. I'll go Sunday.
Figure it out, figure it out and then email us, how about that?
Okay, let's, well, let's just say four o'clock then.
Four o'clock.
Sounds good.
So that everybody knows, four o'clock.
On the thirteenth.
On the thirteenth.
But that's gonna be longer, right? Because it's gonna be.
So it'll be the canvas and then after it'll be the budget.
Budget, end of the budget.
Yep.
Depends on how much everybody costs.
Yep.
Well, okay.
Just saying.
Who's bringing supper?
Thirteenth to four o'clock.
Oh, I think I have the hospital board meeting.
Supper?
Yeah.
Hey, all right.
Maybe we all go with Ben.
You're on the right committee.
We all go with Ben at dinnertime.
No kidding.
All right, thirteenth to four P M, that will be a.
It's gonna be close.
Yeah.
Close.
Won't be close.
Me making it here.
You wanna do it a little, well.
I got, I got a.
You got a doctor's appointment somewhere?
I got a VA thing at one o'clock, two, three.
Can we meet on Saturday? And I'm serious. Well, nobody's, probably nobody's got work to do Saturday, so, and the hospitals are closed.
Path comes out in the weekends anyhow, so.
Oh, I forgot about, I'm sorry.
Hey, if that's what we need to do, that's what we need to do.
Well, it's kinda looking like, you know, weeks free at a time, we can't have a meeting.
I mean, I would, honestly, it's a budget meeting. I mean, if it's just the canvassing, it's one thing, but it's a budget thing. I would like to see everybody here as long. For as mo- most of it as possible. I mean, I'm just saying that because.
Give you extra half hour, would that work, maybe?
Yeah, you know, if I can, if everything clicks at the VA, I'm out of there by three.
Okay.
Four.
Well, if we do the canvassing thing first.
Yep.
And he comes at five for the next meeting or five thirty, that still works. We don't have to have everybody here for canvassing.
And then you're here for five thirty and eleven two.
That's right. And if Adam can make it at five thirty, quarter to six, so we start at four for the canvassing and if we have to wait fifteen minutes. For the other ones to get here to do the budget, so be it.
Well, four forty-five is when the doctor's appointment is, or, or whatever your appointment is.
Yeah.
Right, Adam?
Yeah.
So, um, should we have the canvassing at? At five and then plan at five fifteen, we jump into the budget?
That's about all the longer it'll take for the canvassing, is fifteen minutes.
Oh, if that.
That's not, yeah.
So.
That should give Adam time, that should give Jim time.
Okay, five o'clock.
Five o'clock, that's it.
And that's it.
Budget at five fifteen.
Should I, I could not, I plan not to go to the hospital.
If people can make.
Yeah.
Oh, what time, what time does that say?
Don't make it without you, Ben.
Oh, that's not good.
Oh, I feel bad, you're not gonna have supper there. Oh, bummer.
Can they deliver? I mean, another VA.
Usually they have some left over.
All right.
We had.
Thirteenth, five o'clock, that's it.
Arlington, no.
The thirteenth at five.
Yep. Next item is, uh, review the updated capital improvement plan priorities and funding first identified, and that's that one.
So this is something that the council, uh, brought up last time. We were looking at this information, so, um, I do have. You know, I don't, with the ambulance department going through the changes that they are, uh, I initially had some items that were. uh, I initially had some items that were identified as two thousand and nineteen, and I figured, you know what, we don't really know what the, how things are all gonna fall out with, uh, possibly joining those two, so, um, I talked with Mark and we agreed just to push everything out to twenty, twenty, give us time to figure out how that's all going to be structured, then hopefully those costs will then be shared in one way or another.
That makes sense. No, they aren't gonna get that all done, and, uh, we don't wanna hurry the process.
Well, one of the concerns is that we'll have a lot of new council members to deal with. But that doesn't necessarily mean it's a bad.
Potentially one new council.
One at the most, and she's been on the council.
No, no, with Gaylord.
Gaylord, oh yeah, 'cause they got three of them up, I think.
They got three of them.
If the idea is sound and it makes sense, then anybody that's rational should be able to, for the proponents of it, matter if they're you or no.
Well, honestly, it's the groups that are coming to the councils, I think, is the way it sounds, so it's not like the other way around.
And speaking of which, we do have a, kind of a preliminary meeting on the twentieth of November. I believe where we will just kind of sit down with, uh, Mayor and a couple people, and that'll be kind of, uh, to see if the message is correct, and then from there it'll come to both councils.
There's nothing on the twentieth.
No, what is this?
There's only, the mayor, Paul, uh, the mayor, Pat, and I think two council members.
Yep.
Yeah.
At the first one, then when that's, that's Gaylord and Arlington together, and then when they come up with something, then that's something to go back to the Gaylord Council and come back to the Arlington Council, if I got that right, Pat?
Correct, we just, we, we wanna have, in essence, kind of some guinea pigs to hear the message and to see if there are questions, so that we can make sure that we've got the right message to relay, and we can answer all the questions, they don't come to both councils.
Yeah. So the C I P is just for us to take along and take a look at?
Yeah, this is just for you, based on a previous, uh, discussion about having departments put together what their listing of priorities were for the upcoming year.
So that'll be something, uh, tool I will use at the budget discussions.
Yep.
All right.
And, I guess just with that said, if anybody has any specifics, what I will do is I will try and get information out to you in advance for our meeting on the thirteenth, and if there's anything that you wanna see more of or less of, or you tell me, my hope is that we can knock this out in two more meetings, um, trying to get that finalized. So, let me know in advance if there's anything that you would like to see, but you don't see in the materials that I provide. So.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, moving on then to council committee updates.
Um, planning and zoning, Matt, we talked a little, we had a little discussion, uh, regarding the rental code, we're doing some homework, and, uh, coming back to the meeting next month with some more discussion on the rental code. Um, we also got an update on the meeting, uh, with the Arlington Township regarding the orderly annexation. Um, I think the township realizes the importance of having one, however, I think, um, the Planning and Zoning Commission would like to see negotiations or not negotiations, but, um, expectations of the city council, from the city council before, um, and then direction on who's moving forward, if it's gonna be the planning and zoning, or if it's gonna be, um, who to, uh, negotiate, yeah.
Anything else, that's it?
That, that.
Any others?
We had a street, a street meeting, uh, with Kirby and Pat. That was just us, wasn't it?
Yep.
Tom?
Yep.
I think I was there.
Yeah, that's right.
I was there in body.
Took up a chair. Um, God, I'm just, I remember we all covered, covered quite a bit of ground.
Streetlights?
Pardon?
We talked about the streetlights?
Streetlights, um, Kirby was gonna, actually, he brought one of the streetlights for us to look at, and that was nice to see exactly what we're talking about. Um, we wanna try and put some bids together to get, I guess we have to do some bids, so, um, kinda come up with a spec that we're looking for, for a streetlight, so that we aren't, well, this is almost as good, or this is better, this is what we want.
Can you get some help from Minnesota Valley Electric on that, from our electrical engineers?
Yep, and you're, um, um, is talking with Kyle Rework, and we're trying to get some names of cities or counties that are using that particular streetlight to see how they like them and any problems with them.
Are they still working here?
It's nice you're doing your homework, good job, guys.
No, no, we made sure, hey, we need to know these, we wanna talk to people that have had these lights for five, six years, and if you had a problem, always if we solve them.
Right, yes.
Or have you not had a problem and they've been fantastic?
Yeah.
So we don't get into the same situation, we just are trying to get out of it.
Right.
I think there's been many communities that've switched over to LEDs in the past three or four years.
Oh, I think it's the right move.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
It's getting down to which, which light from which company, from.
They would, they would, those that have switched over would have some experience with.
I remember looking like at three hundred and twenty-four dollars a light fixture plus installation.
So are you looking at getting bids done for that, after you come up with exactly what you want?
Right, yeah, with that company, you know, install them, um, we went over the budget with Kirby, the maintenance budget on, um, kinda added a few things, took off a few things that, um, he wanted on his want list, and.
The apron.
Apron out in front of the shop, uh, probably hold off on that for a while, figured that was eleven thousand dollars. Talked about the, uh, s- paint line striper, you know, for, um, um, putting the parking lines in the parking lots and on Main Street, had a company come in and do that, and I think it was.
Twenty-eight hundred.
Twenty-nine?
Twenty-eight something.
And they were in and out of here in a couple, three days, so he's, we, they took our paint striper up to a shop in Plymouth, and they heard back that it was, would cost too much to fix, or it was just junk, there was nothing there to fix. So they were, Kirby was gonna work on getting, uh, estimates on another paint striper.
Might it be, might it be, how often would we have to have someone repaint?
Well, we talked about that, probably.
Every other year maybe?
Two to three years for two to three thousand dollars, um, if we can find, uh, 'cause that was online when we were talking about this a while back, and, you know, looked at the model and the to make the model, and there was several of them online for sale for five thousand dollars. I think I saw one, a used one, and a one condition for like three thousand or thirty-five hundred. Even if we could get somebody in to do the striping for two to three thousand dollars every two, three years, I think we should still have one for those areas that need to be done or touched up, and we don't wanna have somebody come in to do the lines in front of, uh, like Saint Mary's, you know, that needs to be done. You know, to have an outfit come in, from wherever they come in and do it, would cost us a fortune, I think. So it'd be n- nice to have our own machine, just to be able to handle some of the small jobs.
Small jobs.
But anyhow, Kirby's gonna check on that, um.
Curbing.
Curbing.
The curb, the sidewalk curb deal, Saint Mary's. You drove by and looked at it, 'cause I saw you that day when I, that, that is in horrendous condition.
That's what?
The, the, I, when I drove by that day, I saw you, you must've been looking at the same stuff I was. By Saint Mary's.
Saint Mary's, yeah.
You were driving by looking at the curb, I know, I saw you when I drove by. That is, we talked about making that the next priority project.
What's wrong, or what's happened to it?
Well, the curbs, I don't know how much is wore away there, would you say twenty percent of, it's bad, drive by, then take a look at it?
Where, what part of it?
Saint Mary's, a hundred, well, a hundred fifty, a hundred.
You mean the whole?
The whole stretch, that would, that would take one year's worth of sidewalk money to take care of that.
So are we talking sidewalk, or are we talking about curb?
Curb.
Curb, curb, that curb is terrible.
Like it was bad cement, that it's just coming apart?
Chipping, flaking apart, yeah, if you drive by and look sometime, you don't even have to slow down.
Yeah.
It's not good.
Actually, across the street on the hospital side, there's some areas there that are pretty tacky too.
Yeah, that's, so we talked about that maybe possibly being our next project for s- for curbing, to fix the curbing?
Yeah, yeah.
Because it's, if there's something worse in town, boy, there's gotta be pieces missing.
We bumped it up to five thousand is the amount that we have each year, we bumped it up to eight thousand, just for that Saint Mary's stretch.
Okay.
'Cause I think they figured forty-four, forty-five dollars a foot, and Kirby thought it was a hundred and eighty feet.
So is it around the corner too, to the north?
It's, yeah, it is.
So it's probably everything that was poured when it was put in.
Yes, yeah, it's, it's, if you drive, you, you'll see it, it's tough shape.
Um, I think just going over the budget that he had was, if we could eliminate the, uh, the apron for eleven thousand and ten thousand for the striper, maybe come in with another three to five thousand, you know, that'd almost be sixteen thousand dollars.
But we talked about adding three thousand dollars to his tree budget also, for tree re- for tree removal. He had three thousand dollars budgeted for tree removal, and I think we ended up doubling that to six thousand, but we still trimmed ten to thirteen thousand dollars out of his budget without really hurting anything.
Okay.
That tree thing is something, you know, if you, if you look at the, what the forecasting for the ash trees going down, within probably seven or eight years, every ash tree that's in this town right now is gonna be dead. And are we gonna wait until that happens and take them all out at one time?
They can't do that.
You're gonna have to take a piece of it every year and replace with new trees, non-ash, of course. But rather than waiting for them all to die, uh, be proactive on some of them that are maybe in not so good a shape, or some of the huge ones that could go over in a storm.
But that's kinda why we doubled that three thousand up to six, because we thought we're gonna have to, 'cause we know this problem's coming.
It's coming.
We can't get behind the eight ball.
No.
Three thousand, six thousand probably doesn't get it done, but it's gonna double what we could've done.
Right.
So at least we're hopefully gonna kinda keep up with the program, other than every year losing ground.
I remember when the elm, elm trees went. My God, that was, it was a windfall for the tree service companies.
Oh, yeah.
The same thing could happen with the ash too.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, in Sherwood, we had a, had a park area, a fifty acre park, it took about ten acres, and that was a burning site. I mean, he hauled stuff in, it was, there was smoke there for two years.
Yep, that's something that needs to be dealt with every year.
Just, uh, a side note on the, um, on the street lighting, I did talk with, uh, Jill Green from Minnesota Valley Electric Co-op, uh, in December, uh, he felt that they were going to be approving a change to their loan program in which they will fund seventy-five percent of a project, currently it's at fifty percent, so, there.
Nice.
There's some benefit to us, maybe holding.
Yeah.
Holding on into the new year to initiate that, 'cause then it would be thirty, I think forty thousand for us to.
Nice.
To get into, and that's a ten-year, no interest.
Yeah.
Loans.
That's awesome.
Be great to do. And I, you know, I, I apologize, 'cause I know that you guys have asked for me to give updates on what I'm doing, and, uh, I haven't been doing that, just with Annie being gone, and with Laura being relatively new, it's been really busy. Uh, so I just wanted to hit on a couple things, uh, to, kinda tell you what I've been up to, a lot of it, we've kind of hit a, hit upon, but, uh, one of which is the marketing of Hometown America, we're scheduling a meeting on November nineteenth at seven thirty in the morning. Uh, we're trying to get builders to come in to sit down and talk with, uh, us about why they aren't building in Arlington, and what role can the city play in maybe making that appealing to them? So, so far, I've tried, we're starting out with the local contractors and builders, uh, and then after we have that meeting with them, then we'll branch out and reach out to the others. So they'll see, they'll see a benefit if they're a local builder, but if they don't come, they don't choose to participate, then we're going outside, and if we can get them to come to town, then more power to us. Um, tree, at the beginning of the, we've had, at the beginning of the month, we had some high winds, uh, back in October, towards the end, I've been dealing with, uh, uh, several individuals over on Henderson. Um, Amy.
Berger.
Berger, yep, and, uh, our neighbor who, who had some issues or concerns with, uh, the Machau Co-op and their tree trimming, but we eventually got that done after several visits, that they had to come out to the site. Um, we also, we've been copier renewals, we, uh, if we would not have renewed, if we would have done nothing, they would have automatically renewed our copier in the administration department. We said, hold on, let's go out for bids, so I've got five bids sitting on our counter, which we haven't been able to get to. Uh, but we plan to take a look at that, find what is the most reasonable offer. Uh, if that's, uh, using the existing one, which we're happy with, great, if it's cheaper to go with a new one that they bring in, uh, we'll do that, so, um, been working with that, um, Cr- uh, Christian Lilienthal, uh, Rich, Amy and myself have been talking a little bit with him. Um, with the possibility of trying to, uh, bring his ani- animals to a site here in Arlington. They're already here, but bring them to a different location where they could maybe be put on display for, uh, area of residents, uh, we thought that would be a positive thing for Arlington to have. Uh, so we're exploring options to work with him and to keep him here in Arlington. Uh, we also had the power outage, which I know, Michelle, you were aware of this morning. Uh, it was at about eight-ten, and it was about for ten minutes, I believe. Uh, and it'll be happening again on Friday, uh, about the same time, so, they're putting in new transformer. I did get some complaints from some individuals saying, why are you doing it during business hours, you should be doing it after hours when you're not, you know, interfering with people's lives, well, I did reach out to Kurt Court, he said that reasons why they do it during the the daytime hours are because then they don't have to provide lighting, it's a safer work environment for them to be working in, and then secondly, cost, I mean, you've got people who are there during their workday versus having to come in after hours and incur overtime costs.
But also the enterprise too, that there was gonna be an outage.
And in our newsletter, and lots of different places, but maybe it'd be nice to throw it on our city sign for on Friday if we could.
Okay, that's a great suggestion, so. Yep. So, and I will, I'll, I'll keep trying to get these, I'll keep trying to get more emails out to you in terms of what things are happening and going on in administration and, uh.
If there's important things to get done, worry about them, we can deal with the, your information later.
Yep.
And that can wait, I'd rather see you get more important things done than worrying about sending us an email about.
Yeah, yeah.
Busy if you, I mean.
Yep, yep, so I will try and, even if it's just a real brief one, to say, here's what's going on and.
Can we get an update about, um, I know there's been some, um, concerns regarding, um, Heartland, um, and the drying that they've been doing?
Oh.
Can you give us an update on what's been going on?
Northland drying?
Northland drying, thank you.
Yep, certainly can, uh, yeah, I, uh, going back sometime, you know, when we first started getting complaints, we did, uh, reach out to Northland Drying, they said that they were working on several different options, uh, including extending the stack, trying to direct the noise in a certain direction, uh, they got a variable frequency drive, which uh, they've now installed, which is supposedly supposed to be quieter than the other equipment that they had. We have put something into the newspaper, asking individuals that if they do have concerns, please contact City Hall, what Northland Drying is asking for is that we identify the the time and the day, uh, one of the challenges that they've had is that they've received calls. Uh, sometimes those individuals complain about noise when they're not in operation, because they've had some issues with the equipment, and so they have some downtime, uh, when they're. And so they have some downtime, uh, when there is no noise, they've received complaints from residents during the times that they were down. So we've been tracking, uh, Laura has done a great job of, of receiving a lot of those, uh, uh, concerns and complaints. She then tracks the date and the time, and she has, we've forwarded that onto, uh, the two partners and the manager out there at Northland Drying. And we're basically, uh, hoping to have a meeting just to get together and say, okay, you know, we're still receiving some concerns, are there additional steps that we can take to try and minimize that noise? So it's ongoing, but we are trying to stay on top of it.
Thanks for the update.
Sure.
Okay, I went to the, uh, LMC meeting in Mankato, uh, last Thursday, I think it was.
Yeah.
And a very good meeting. I heard the city administrator of Mankato speak, and they, that is a community that is really on the go. Uh, one of the fastest growing cities in the state. And, um, he talked about a partnership they had, and it's a regional partnership. It's Saint Peter, Mankato, Eagle Lake, Lake Crystal, they're all in one regional, um, planning group. And, um, they realize that the whole region is, is prospering because of what's happening right in the hub of it, which is Mankato. Um, if you, uh, just on the internet sometime, uh, go on and, and Google mo- more Mankato, more Mankato. And it'll, it'll open up, uh, internet site that is just fantastic, I think. And I thought, when he was talking about this, I thought, yeah, very, you know, choose Arlington. We can do the same, same idea on a smaller basis, of course. They, he talked about, the city administrator talked about building relationships, city and city, city and school districts, city and chambers. To, to just let everyone be involved in what's going on in the, in the regional area. So it was very interesting. Oh, what else, they talked about, uh, Pat, you may, may or may not know about this, fire and police pension rates are going up by two percent over the next two years. Both on a part that's paid in by the employee and by the employer, but two percent total. And then, of course, we heard Dave Bartholomay, is that Ray Bell anybody?
Yes.
Uh, mayor of Circle Pines, just one interesting fellow. Uh, he talked, talks about, um, conflict resolution, and, um.
Oh, yeah, they had a ton of it when they were going through the police department, uh, conjunction that they had up there.
They consolidated it.
Yeah.
Consolidated it, yeah. Yeah, so he's, uh, he's been mayor at Circle Pines for eighteen years, and he's, he's, he's also, his full-time job, uh, he had another fellow, and they run an agency, or they're part of an agency, a two-person agency at the Minnesota Capitol. And they deal with conflict resolution with, uh, city councils, with, uh, city ag- state agencies. If there's some issues going on, they'll go in and they'll try and resolve it as a third-party mediator. So that was interesting. So that's it from that one, that was, I was glad I went. One other issue, and let's talk about it. It doesn't have to be private, but I think we all have some input, probably. Do, do we, uh, renew the, um, planning and zoning coordinators contract for next year? I think there's been enough of issues come up that it's worth some discussion.
I'll be short and sweet, I'd say renew, get a new one. And I think that would come from a few.
Don't renew?
No, get a new one.
Get a new one.
And I think if you took a consensus from a few of the other EDA members, they would agree, without using names, agree one hundred percent.
Yeah. No, we're talking about plant, I'm talking about, did I say EDA?
No, you're talking about.
I'm saying some of the members of the EDA.
It was brought up at the EDA meeting.
It was brought up, the concern of her at the EDA meeting.
Yes, it was.
And that we should look at getting another, or different, planning and zoning director.
I would, I, I would say that it's worth looking into and see what we can find. I, I'd say there's not, no, nothing, uh, it doesn't hurt anything to look, to see what's out there.
I've heard nothing, so I, I don't have a clue what's being talked about.
Does, I wonder what her contract, I mean, can we, just like on thirty days notice, we can?
I think it's a yearly contract.
Is that a yearly contract?
So I think it expires at the end of this year, so I mean, um, you know, that gives, you know, a person a month and a half, two months to look at.
But it may be a thirty day notice, in other words, we'd have to let her know, uh, first of December if.
That's why we probably need to get the ball rolling.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause we only have three weeks left of November, and we're already in December.
You know, I, I guess I don't have any, well, I do, but I think since she has her full-time job in Belle Plaine, I think she's still doing that. I've been keeping her pretty busy, and I don't know, time-wise, if I'm with you, it wouldn't hurt to look. I think we should, I think we need to.
Well, somebody did. I, you know, I think number one, the city of Arlington should come first, and I know it's only a part-time gig for people, but we should feel like we're first.
True.
I mean, I'll be real honest, I know planning and zoning has to do a job, but that whole ordeal with planning and zoning and Ninkasi was a joke. I, I, why would you put a, I, I was so frustrated with that. I mean, it doesn't stop there.
Well, that, that sort of, um, attitude and such lingered for a couple of meetings. I, I'm not exaggerating.
I think there's been times when she's been contacted, I don't know, you know, I, I hear about it secondhand. Times when she's been contacted by someone having interest in moving into the community with a business. Or in the process of they've made the decision to move in, and, um, you know, I think sometimes you've gotta hold their hand a little bit and walk them through the process, and start saying, here's what you need, dot, 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 bye. And, you know, what kind of a welcome is that? Sometimes you just have to help them a little bit in getting everything together that they need to get together.
Yeah, we don't need more barriers.
No, and I think there has been.
I know when I had my building for sale, someone was looking to dismantle cars and sell parts, and called her, nope, you know.
Yeah.
But why, but why?
She could've sat down and talked with you and said, these are.
Well, you know, find out exactly what they wanted to do.
But, but not, yeah, not only that, but if that's what they wanted to do, then let's look at this, let's see if we can.
That's not for Arlington.
No, let's see if we can make something work, right? And I think that's, that's where I'm coming from, I mean, I'm, I wanna be welcoming and not bending over that we're losing, we wanna win, right?
Yep.
But we don't wanna turn people away because of what's, what's zoned right now, zoned the way it is. So we gotta be welcoming and con- you know, accommodating. People can go anywhere, businesses can go anywhere. Our EDA has really been proactive, I think, trying to talk to and whatever, and I think, um, that committee is the absolute op- opposite right now, the way it stands.
I think you have your answer.
Well, like I say, we'll need to look at her contract and see if we need thirty day notice, we know we gotta do something by, by December first. Uh, otherwise, if, if this doesn't happen now, I think just a word of advice to the councils, we've gotta, as much as we can, keep an eye on what's going on, um, make sure we have a representation at, at meetings. We can't, there's no way we can control when she gets a private phone call from somebody, asks some questions, how she handles it. But things that we are aware of or should be aware of, we, we have to sorta be looking over shoulders, I think.
But that's a perfect reason why we, why we should not renew. You gave us every reason we need to not renew her contract, just by what you stated.
Absolutely.
Cause we shouldn't have to look over her shoulder for the money she's making. It's that easy.
But we'll have to go out there and see what's available.
Well, that's, yeah.
Now, we could terminate her contract and not have any planning and zoning until we find someone.
Yep.
It may be two or three months.
But, well, if that happens, it happens.
If it happens, it happens.
We've been operating that way before.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just.
Well, and, okay, so, let's just say that, I mean, there's nothing that we can decide right now about it.
No.
But let's say at the next meeting, that's what we decide, she, you need the thirty day notice, so that would be when we'd have to make a decision. And then what if we don't have somebody as a chairperson or as a EDA director?
Then the president of the EDA, or I'm assuming Jim Kraft, would probably take that position, or whoever the council appointed.
Well, it wouldn't be.
Until we got a new planning and zoning director. I mean, someone's gonna have to grab the bull by the horns during the meetings. And we really do need somebody that knows all the laws and regulations. Cynthia's very good at that.
She is.
I think she's excellent at that end of it. But the PR end of it, and, and getting stuck on something so much that she's not willing, when I, when, I think you were at the meeting I was at with Ninkasi, when they went to agree with something, and there were some questions brought up, and instead of cabling it, they just denied it. Now, why would you do that, if you need more information? But I think that her mind, I know her mind was made up by the first five words she said that day, that this was going nowhere. And the council's pushing, and everybody involved, the EDA, Amy, everybody, to hopefully get this Ninkasi thing to work, and we're butting heads with the planning and zoning. Wrong.
Yeah, yeah.
Wrong, totally wrong.
Well, we gotta be working together, right?
But, but to go on your.
We probably want all this, and we've got something sitting there, that I don't know wants as much as it, as we do.
I, but I do have to say that I don't think that anybody on that committee is, um, has the knowledge that's needed, or none of us.
Agreed.
Okay, so I, I would say that if that's the case, we need to finally get somebody that's gonna be the interim person, not somebody from the committee, but somebody.
And I wouldn't have a problem with that, because I would not, I would agree, I would rather not use anybody on that committee at this time. Could be ahead until we find a replacement.
Or maybe you can extend the contract from month to month until, and you don't have to have a year contract, you can just have a temporary.
But, I, I.
But, I mean, with our intentions being known, I mean, then what's gonna stop them from saying, well, if you're not cutting our, my contract higher? You know.
Again, I think that's what would happen.
Well, uh, it probably would, so.
I know Sibley County did not have to work with their planning and zoning person.
I was just gonna say.
I think he's probably out the door already, isn't he?
Yeah, I believe so.
And that was WSB?
I believe so.
Oh, we're, we, one of those that we were gonna go with.
County hired one of their people and it didn't work out.
What's that?
WSB.
County Planning and Zoning Coordinator.
Oh.
They hired one from WSB, and through WSB, which is one of, this firm that put in our, our, uh, a, you know, application here. So anyhow.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Highland, second by Councilmember Hattlested, to adjourn the meeting, and I favor say aye.
Aye.
Close no.
And it's.
Meeting adjourned at nine o'clock.
What a night.
Woo.
Yeah. One night hath by all. Good night.
Where else can you have this much fun on a Monday night?
Right.
That's right.
When it's raining outside.
Don't forget to vote tomorrow.
That's right.
Oh, God, I knew there was something I had to do tomorrow.
Who are we supposed to vote for?
Where, where are we supposed to vote for?
Who, yeah.
Who?
Well, you know. Give me your ballot, I'll.
I don't know, the way it sounds is that a lot of people are voting, or they're making it sound that way, either, um.
Have voted already?
Have voted already.
Yeah, yeah, I hear that too.
Have voted already.
I think that's, uh, I think Tom had, Tom and Diana have voted already.
Well, I know quite a few people at school that have voted already.
I'd like to go there and punch my own ticket.
Yeah.
Get my sticker. Well, they do, they give you a sticker.
I mean, yeah, they do.
Cause I did that for the primary, cause when we were gone.
Yeah, but if you vote by, by mail, or absentee, you don't get a sticker.
Absentee or early.
Yeah, you do.
Do you, really?
They gave us a sticker. Oh, wow, that, that, I mean, look at that, again, I mean, all the sticker.
Well, I mean, I think it would be nice, um, do you know that, um, Pat, um, Meenavir, he sent out a letter to, I'm assuming it was more than just my sons, so I'm thinking all college kids that were of age to vote.
Oh, really?
Telling them how they can absentee ballot vote.
Oh, really?
Yeah, that's, that's good, that's being organized, thank you, sir.
Well, I mean, it's, I mean, it's hidden that, that age group that don't vote typically, right? Um, the only way they would vote, if, especially if they're in college and getting educated, is if it, be it absentee.
True.
So, you know, but the, I don't know if my kid ended up doing it or not, you know.
I hope you thought him well.
He's responsible just like, he's responsible just like this one. He can fly a plane, he can vote, right?
Yeah.
I don't know, uh, just keep in mind, uh, concern over Ross, he came in and said there was an emergency in the family, and that's why couldn't be here tonight, so I hope and pray that it wasn't anything serious, but, uh, so.
I feel like I'm, I'm forgetting something that I wanted to say.
Larry Iziki said, told me Sunday, and he said, oh, he said, it looks like your patrolman was busy over the weekend, I said, what? And he said, there were two deaths, two people died. Hannah, Hannah, Hannah was called to.
Who died?